Okay, right now, we're back in open session now after having closed session. And Chancellor Burke will now provide a welcome greeting. Chancellor Burke, do you have a welcome greeting?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting at the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members who are participating via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Trustees Marsha Milchiker, Tim Jamal, Terry Witt-Rydel, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, TJ Prendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustee Ethan Monafi have been designated as panelists. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting via live Zoom webinar. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the district website. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raise hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak and are encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested for public comments to be submitted in advance of meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time during the meeting. If you submitted a public comment for this meeting, the board president has allowed for public comments to be read by the writer. If you submitted a public comment and have requested to read the comment into the record, your name will be called and you will be unmuted and allowed to speak. Please note that the two-minute limit will be observed. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchiker, who will call the meeting to order.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor Burke. The March 29, 2021, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54953, and Governor Newsom's executive orders N. 2920 and N. 3520. I ask that the trustees mute themselves at this time. Are there any actions taken in closed session, Chancellor?
There were no reportable actions, President Milchiker.
Thank you, there were actions, but no reportable actions. Now, right now, we will have an invocation led by myself, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by trustee Prendergast, followed by public comments. So right now, we will have the invocation. Given by me. There are seven revolutions, there are seven resolutions on our agenda this evening. Some are commemorating our magnificent community colleges. Some celebrate the incredibly wonderful diversity that we have at our colleges. One reminds us of our stewardships of our planet Earth. And several remind us of unspeakable atrocities that took place with our forceful, never-ending plea of "never again." We experienced together a worldwide, seemingly never-ending pandemic, and now two more mass shootings. Our hearts are breaking, but we must put all of our efforts together to solve these difficulties. Scientists worked tirelessly to bring us safe, effective vaccines to end the pandemic and bring us hope. In our colleges, we have the privileges of educating students who will make a difference in their world and in our world. We are so very proud of all the work all of you do to accomplish this. Thank you. And now the pledge of allegiance by trustee Prendergast.
Please place your right hand over your heart and say the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I ask the chancellor to read aloud any public comments received by email. If the member of the public has submitted a written comment and has requested to speak, their name will be called and they will be unmuted and allowed to speak. A two-minute time limit will be observed. Please note, all email correspondence relating to this meeting become part of our board minutes. So Chancellor Burke, are there any comments now?
There are 28 comments this evening, and I will read half of them, and Vice Chancellor Gabel will read the other half. We'll alternate back and forth.
Thank you.
The first comment is from Alice Lynn. "I was teaching the maximum part-time load, 10 L H Es, at IVC before I got a full-time position. My annual salary was about $28,000. I qualified for low-income housing, but the wait lists are about five years, and some other public assistance. I rented a 10-by-12 bedroom to share with my active toddler. I worked in the hallway, sitting on the floor while my baby slept at night. I ate food that could be reheated quickly in a shared kitchen. I considered getting another job, but with the cost of childcare and the hours needed to travel between schools, I would make less than I earned. Yes, the salary may seem high on paper, but in Orange County, I was basically living in poverty as an adjunct professor at IVC."
The next one is from Catherine Kramer, Associate Faculty Emeritus Institute. "It's nearly 10 at night, but I have yet to enjoy a single television show as yet due to my work on a project I started in November that finally comes to fruition tomorrow. If you knew the hours I put into organizing, scripting, and finding interdepartmental cooperation, you'd ask why part-timers don't get stipends for extra work. I had a chair at IVC who offered me extra work for pay after I updated the language for 24 different courses. The dean above her said he couldn't pay me, given the scope of faculty limitations on doing classified or other work, yet these updates took academic knowledge, not clerical skills. Furthermore, to apply for faculty development funds for every extra report or event just heaps on the distraction of bureaucracy. Simply trust what we tell you and include the deserved pay raises in our hourly wage so we can survive on what few osh we're given. We part-timers don't get holiday pay, and twice I've had to appeal for unemployment insurance when denied. I won each time. However, I applied for EDD in mid-December for winter break and never received dissent, nor even a denial. Despite a mid-January interview with an EDD rep, my monies are still pending, and here's spring break upon us. I wish they would answer my emails and phone calls. If I could obtain the denial letter, at least I could progress with an appeal. Do not delude yourself that we have social programs in place for stopgap benefits. I make too much money to obtain food stamps, yet what happens when I purchase a minimum of fresh groceries? Debit card days? Am I really expected to seek free food alongside our poor students? Yet the college hits me up to donate to its charity events. You offer students free laptops. When I asked for a loner, I was told we were out. I started working for Saddleback College in 1989, when my past teaching experience and grad school credits and MFA degree placed me in the top fields. I left for full-time work elsewhere, returned less than a decade later because I love teaching here so much, and now I was placed only in the third tier along with the regular MA holders, not the PhD equivalent. No one could find my records. I accumulated sick leave and so forth. Hence, when I went for an interview at IVC, they called HR to find my history of employment and decided I lied about my four years at Saddleback. Of course, I had to go through the record transfer and fingerprinting all over again. I'm certain the tenure-track employees who returned to teach part-time suffer none of that indignity. Sincerely frustrated Catherine Kramer."
The next comment is from Yancy Gasalem. "I am creating or adjusting my online lecture in Canvas for those students to do their assignments. I feel I am spending more time on Canvas and still not getting paid. Office hours do not get paid for students who request the Zoom meeting appointment." You're up.
Okay. The next one is from Laura Vidal Prudhomme, Associate Faculty Social and Behavioral Sciences. "I have worked as part-time faculty at Saddleback for over 15 years and also have to supplement my income by looking to other colleges for additional classes. I have exemplary evaluations and a work-full-load nine-to-10 units per semester for all of this time at Saddleback College, yet until recently was not able to get medical insurance. Two years ago, I was offered by Orange Coast College medical insurance from Kaiser as part of their group insurance at $599 per month. My employment at OCC has been more sporadic and is typically only one class per term, yet they offered this invaluable benefit to me. Yes, I am taking advantage of the $500 reimbursement, but am perplexed as to why the college I have been most committed to does not offer the same benefit. It has been a struggle to piece together enough work to make a living over these last 15 years. I absolutely love what I do, but the stress and insecurity of not knowing from semester to semester whether I will be able to meet my financial obligations as the sole proprietor has a negative effect on my physical and emotional well-being. My hope is that we will be seen as valuable enough to our board and chancellor that you will rectify the pay disparity issues and benefit disparity as well. Sincerely, Laura Vidal Prudhomme."
Julia Schreiber says, "Post-COVID, I had three Saddleback Emeritus in-person classes. Post-COVID, I've had two classes despite my desire to stay at three classes, and I have as many or more students online. My classes are large, generally 80-plus or more. With online emails, Zoom meetings, Zoom classes, embedded lectures and modules, tech training, converting my lectures to a digital format, answering several hundred emails regularly, I'm working double time. I have not complained because frankly, there are many people out of work. That said, a grocery checker makes more money than I do. And yes, there's nothing wrong with that job, but it does not require a couple of degrees with honors and years and years of teaching experience. So do I think we need a significant salary increase? Not even a question. I love my job and cannot even imagine doing anything else. Certainly, more money would be very helpful, and it is long past due."
Next up is Nikki Smith, Associate Faculty Communication Studies. "My comment is regarding pay equity for adjunct part-time faculty. The content of the attached email below speaks volumes. Please save the date for our upcoming workshops. April 9, 21, 10:00 a.m. to noon, how to interview for a full-time faculty position. May 7, 2021, 10:00 a.m. to noon, how to apply for unemployment insurance. In the same breath, part-time faculty are invited to learn how to interview for a full-time position and how to apply for unemployment. The irony is almost comical. The reality is that the full-time position is rare, and the need for unemployment is reality. That is why pay equity is crucial. How can a college promote equity for students when it doesn't require equity for its educators? Thank you."
Next, the next speaker would like to present her own comments.
Michelle Doherty. Good evening. My name is Michelle Doherty, and I'm adjunct faculty in the English Department at IVC with the district five years now, teaching for 11 overall. And I wish to just first say that I'm very grateful for my employment, and I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I stand with others who earnestly desire to see an increase in both wages and job stability for adjunct faculty. With these measures put in place, adjunct faculty may not need to brace ourselves each term for worst-case income scenarios due to factors like low enrollment and lost classes. It seems reasonable to suggest that more stabilized lives can better enable our students' lives, specifically in regard to their academic pursuits. With increased wages and stability measures, adjunct faculty may also be able to pay off our outstanding student loans, or possibly buy houses in or around the very communities we work for. With salaries commensurate with community standards, we can focus more fully on equipping students for their pursuits and less on our own survival. We can hope to achieve greater work-life balance. I certainly promise to give my utmost for my students, colleagues, and the district, whatever the case. At the same time, I ask that you please consider our plea. For it seems the more equipped we are as adjuncts who labor together for the very same noble cause, the more likely our students will thrive. It seems we thrive better together when each one flourishes, being protected and provided the very best working conditions possible. Thank you so much for listening."
The next one is from Maive Luong, Associate Faculty Chemistry. "I'd first like to state that SOCCCD does currently pay better than the other campus I teach at, but that isn't a plus. But rather, remark at how sad the current state of pay for education is, and even more so for part-timers. I'm currently working three jobs and continuously finding other side gigs to do during my free time, and just applied for another job this coming semester. I do all of this because I have bills to pay and a future to save up for. All of the hours I'm required to work to make a living wage significantly hinders my ability to teach. Yes, I work multiple jobs to make nins meet. If I was compensated well enough, there would be no reason for me to spread myself this thin, even with all the hours and jobs I put in easily, being paid less than my similarly educated peers while having less job security. This negatively impacts my ability to effectively instruct students, as I'm already balancing different curriculums between two campuses. But when it comes down to it, time spent outside of a lecture as it is is better spent prioritizing generating money and paying the bills than going above and beyond for the students. At the moment, I'm left in a situation where the lower pay jeopardizes my ability to be an effective instructor, as I have to prioritize my livelihood over going above and beyond for my students."
Svetlana Legoykina, a chemistry instructor at IVC, says, "Thank you for your efforts. Synagogeit some equality for part-time faculty. I've been teaching for seven years at IVC and other colleges around. Let me share some latest experience. I live in Silverado Canyon, and in the last four months was evacuated three times, two times because of the fire, one time because of the flood. Bond fire on December 3rd started right in our backyard, and we were fighting it with our own fire hose on three sides before firefighters arrived and after, because they couldn't reach the flames. Fortunately, I was teaching earlier that day and continued to teach from evacuation later. With the flood on March 10th, we were not so lucky. The burned ground came down in the early morning, clogged the creek, and in front of my eyes, the wall of water washed away our shed and the car. All news channels were rolling that video, how two cars go down with water. The roads were blocked. I didn't make it to work to another college where I teach face-to-face labs. Then I continued to work from the hotel in evacuation. So after going through fires, floods, significant loss of property, fears for our lives, on top of everyday stress with COVID and job insecurities, I never heard a word of support from my working place. I lost my wages, in fact, a quarter of a monthly salary, miserable already, because I didn't make it to school on the day of the flooding. In daily school emails, I see expression of support for all noble causes across the country, but never for local ones. Another issue is kind of little, but also painful. A year ago, when we started online teaching, I didn't wear any glasses. My vision was good enough to work on the computer and grade papers. A year later, after the beginning of distance learning, I am on my third pair of glasses. Grading on speed grader, hundreds of assignments every week is extremely hard on my eyes. Of course, I don't have vision insurance and can't afford to visit an ophthalmologist. Distance education dramatically changed our working conditions. I remember some chairs were offered to the faculty, but what about the eyes? Maybe some allowance for vision care would be a fair move. Thank you."
Next up, Mark Matun, Associate Faculty Humanities and Languages. "Thank you for reading my comments, as I am not able to be in attendance. My name is Mark Matun. My wife, Michelle, and I are classified as adjunct instructors for SOCCCD. We value the work, we enjoy our coworkers. We have a lot in common with faculty of all classification. We love the students of Southern California and beyond. We are engaged in the earnest pursuit of enlightening ourselves to advance the educational outcomes for those students tirelessly, semester to semester, week to week, lecture to lecture. We professors all lament the students who drop without giving us a chance to help, as we know the success the students crave is just around the corner. We celebrate those who ask for that help and flourish. We professors are blessed in that way and in many other small, innumerable ways. Similarly, we share the experience of many other families inside and outside our profession during the last 12 months. Children are home, their school is at home, we are at home, our work is at home. Generally, we're likely to be whole in mind and body, more or less, whatever that means. Of course, we hope this is something we also share with everyone. Again, we share so much. We love our families, friends, pets, and Girl Scout cookies, too. What we don't share is stability. We don't share any steady assurances about the next 12-plus months. We work for two colleges with different start dates for the spring, summer, and fall semesters, and all three finish on different dates also. We don't share the knowledge about what courses or times of day will work from semester to semester either. We don't share knowing what our earning potential will be in three or four months. We don't share the economic constancy that allows one to weather a tough break or an accident. We don't consistently earn for that rainy day fund. We don't share being informed, 25% of our spring 2021 income was eliminated one week before the semester started. We don't share the lack of assurance that an additional 25% of our spring income would be available until the end of the first week of the semester. We don't share that half our household income was in doubt until February 27. We don't share confidence about the next six months. We don't share peace of mind."
John Hart, an instructor of cinema, TV, and radio, says, "Aside from what full-time faculty have as obligations for meetings, advising, scheduling, and other requirements required by the college, part-time faculty should be paid the equivalent of full-time for in-classroom teaching time, since part-time are performing the same work with the same qualifications as full-time for actual classroom teaching time in hours."
Karil Gladkowsky, Associate Faculty Music Instructor. "Hello, we wanted to thank the board for your continuing support for the faculty. We would like to ask you to take further tasks to support the faculty on three fronts. Number one is salary. The cost of living in Southern Orange County is prohibitively high. There is no decent homes for less than $850,000 to $1 million in the entire area, and even these are being snatched in a day or two. This is completely out of range of the faculty salaries. All the children activities, gas, all services, utilities, et cetera, are all very high. A good salary increase is very much needed and would be greatly appreciated. Number two, you may not be aware of this one. The faculty loads have explosively increased in the past couple of years. These add-ons, so to speak, are not directly teaching or recruiting-related. They are secretarial and statistical entries faculty has been forced to do, such as reports, reviews, SLOs, required trainings, dozens of emails per day, meetings, ever-changing online platforms, apps, other new requirements. All these not only make faculty lives very stressful, but also take valuable time and energy from the actual teaching and professional skills development away from nurturing students or recruitment. Literally, they take twice as long to do than the actual teaching, so the load basically triples. This was not in our initial hiring contracts. It was not required before, and it is not compensated. I see the solution in hiring more lab techs and secretaries to alleviate this technical entry load. Maybe we can be relieved from some of it for good and from doing the rest so often as well. Number three, adjunct faculty loads and salaries are low and very unstable. There should be more equal parity with the full-timers for the same type of work and the load guarantee. Thank you for your time, understanding, and support in these difficult times."
The next comment is anonymous. "I am an assistant coach here at Saddleback. I love my job and am not one to complain. That said, here is a summary of my current circumstances. I commute over 40 minutes each way to campus, adding another 40 minutes to get COVID tested prior to practice. I am at practice for three hours before I resume the drive home. I also spend hours each week researching, planning practices, and analyzing video. Our competitions are on Fridays and Saturdays, are often 12-hour days. At the moment, I am receiving 1,300 per month compensation. I spend approximately $400 in gas per month. In the fall, I receive 400 per month for coaching two days per week, which barely covers the drive to campus or my time. I am employed as faculty, master's degree, 16 years of experience with nine years of head coaching experience. I am not a member of CalPERS, elected not to because I have social security built up, and our family pays health insurance out of pocket. With rising food, gas, childcare, and healthcare premiums, the compensation is a little bit difficult."
Next is Shilong Quang, Associate Faculty Mathematics. "To our chancellor's office, it's a tough year for all of us during the past year. Thanks for the district school supporting our part-time faculty, especially for the adjustable chair last year. I was teaching at the other schools, too, but without any doubt, our district is the best. I have been teaching here for seven-plus years, and I'm still loving it. Based on the Fed, we are expecting the inflation rate going to jump much higher in the coming years, which will make us the living situation more tough. I would appreciate it if the district can continue to support us, even though small adjustment from the district means a lot for us. Thanks for your consideration, Jason K."
Adam Boggs, an associate faculty at Saddleback College, says, "Equal pay for equal work is an issue I am especially committed to. I have worked as an adjunct instructor for five years. The amount of time necessary to prepare a lecture, mentor students, and evaluate progress does not match with the remuneration. As such, it is impossible to work only as an adjunct and meet one's material needs for survival. In other words, adjuncting as a vocation is only sustainable if one works multiple jobs and exceeds a 40-hour work week. As the system is designed, it is a necessary evil. The only way to build a competitive CV is to experience adjunct teaching. However, in an incredibly competitive job market, full-time faculty vacancies are fewer and fewer, leaving many dedicated professors stuck in the adjunct cycle, performing the same work as full-time faculty but for diminished pay and a creeping feeling of hopelessness."
Barbara DiMarco Barrett, Associate Faculty Emeritus Institute. "Chancellor, I've been teaching in Emeritus since the fall of 2018. I loved teaching advanced creative writing, and this spring of 2021, I also began teaching nonfiction writing. I'm surprised to learn part-time faculty earn 58% of what full-time faculty earn. If there's a rationale for this, I don't know what it is. We part-timers put much time and energy into making our classes as strong as they can be. In the last year with teaching online, we're all contributing more time and energy into making our classes as involving and interesting as possible. While my asynchronous classes meet weekly via Zoom, I also post lectures, resources, and assignments on Canvas. Those of us who work part-time for Saddleback do not receive the perks that the full-time faculty members receive. An increase in salary for part-time faculty is justified, and at this point would only be fair. Thanks for considering, Barbara DiMarco Barrett."
Professor Renee Garcia says, "I am a full-time faculty member of the Anthropology Department at Saddleback College. I rely on the skill, knowledge, and depth of..." I rely on the skill, knowledge, and depth of experience from our excellent part-time faculty, half of whom have families, like Mark Zajak, who has been with us for more than 10 years, and Holly Pittaway, a mother of two and a popular faculty among students. Katie Zioli has accomplished remarkable things as a part-time member of our team and has been with us for longer than I, 16 years. They have given their best on our campus and have the numbers to prove their value with high retention and excellent averages. These people deserve the same pay. They work just as hard as full-timers. We can no longer abuse them by providing less pay. It is illogical and unethical. I support our part-time faculty."
Janet S. Jackson, Associate Faculty, Saddleback College Adult Education. I am a mother of four, working part-time at SCC. I love my job, but with the rising cost of living, it is difficult to make ends meet. More than half of my salary goes towards medical insurance for myself and my family. If you were in our situation, you would understand. I do this job because it is my passion. My student successes are all the rewards I need to continue working here. Living in Southern California has its rewards, but it comes with challenges. It is not easy to get by on our part-time salaries. It is not easy to educate our children on rising tuition costs. It is not easy to put gas in our tanks with increasing gas prices. It is not easy all around. Every little bit of an increase would help with life. We hope you would understand our situation and come to a reasonable resolution. Thank you."
Arnold McMahon, Associate Faculty Humanities and Philosophy, says, "It is a great joy teaching at Saddleback, but a dark cloud hangs over it. Part-time faculty get paid only 58% of what full-time faculty get paid. This is a great social injustice that has endured for many, many years. The board should wipe away this stain now. There should be no salary increases for any administrator or full-time faculty member until this is rectified. I have taught here for almost 30 years."
William Etter, Full-Time Faculty English. I have been a full-time instructor at IVC in the English Department since 2004 and served as department chair. I have had extensive contact with our part-time faculty, have observed their excellent teaching in the classroom, and have been consistently impressed with their work ethic and their dedication to our students. I feel grateful that they are my colleagues, and so I am distressed by the significant inequalities in pay between full and part-time faculty. Our part-time faculty deserve better. Thank you, William Etter.
Gary Lee Lane, Associate Faculty in Political Science, says, "A great way to demonstrate appreciation and respect for part-time faculty is with a reasonable salary increase. Thank you."
Paula Gertik, Associate Faculty Emeritus Institute. To whom it may concern, as a Saddleback College part-time faculty member for 13 years, I urge you to respond positively to our concerns. During this pandemic, part-time faculty have gone over and above providing students with the same level of professionalism and instruction, even though instructors had to quickly adapt to distance learning at the same time providing technical assistance to our students. In addition, the cost of supporting these distance learning requirements was solely on the instructor. Examples of these costs for me was a laptop securing my home network with upgrades and purchasing supplies and equipment. Apart from these additional costs, workload has increased with SLOs, curriculum review, attendance from Zoom, continuous Canvas training, and department meetings to keep up with the changing technologies and state requirements. Part-time faculty continue to teach for a lower rate of pay than full-time faculty for the same work and qualifications. Lastly, the cost of living has increased in Orange County, outpacing our compensation scale. Thank you for your consideration of this request. I greatly enjoy working with my Saddleback College team."
Marcella Hernandez, Associate Faculty in Counseling, says, "I just want to share that for part-time faculty members, here are a few things we experience. No benefits. I pay 560 a month for myself for Covered California. Lower wages. Hours depend on budget every year. Last choice of course offerings to teach. At times, we commute to two campuses a day, or a few days a week, or more than two campuses a term, which gas and mileage and time is not accounted for. Multiple campus trainings to keep abreast of an array of protocols and programs, et cetera, such as guided pathways, equity, transfer. I must commute due to cost of living in Orange County and can't compete with the OC housing market. I wanted to include my thoughts about being an adjunct faculty member in general, and I do have to say I am not complaining, as I feel very fortunate to work at IVC as a counselor in this awesome helping capacity, especially during the times we are living in. IVC's counseling department does a great job, including part-time counseling faculty, in all that they can."
Beatrice Garcia-Lua, Associate Faculty Liberal Arts. As a part-time faculty for 12 years at Saddleback College and having the same professional qualifications as a full-time faculty, we part-time faculty should qualify for equal pay and have the same health benefits as a full-time faculty, regardless of our professional duties. For many years, part-time faculty are called freeway flyers because they are trying to support their families at multiple campuses on miserable salaries and without benefits. I think it is time for a change and recognize that full-time and part-time faculty should have the same rights, since they have the same professional qualifications and do the same amount of professional duties.
John Lycitra, Full-Time Faculty Counseling, says, "I would like to express appreciation for the opportunity to share some thoughts tonight. I am not much of a public speaker, although I deal with the public every day, and I am not one to worry or complain, although I hear these from others and try to ease their pain. But I am optimistic, caring, and supportive, and try to convey the same while teaching and counseling each and every day. But my story is not unique, as I pale by comparison to the talent and expertise of other faculty, at least. So please consider the following with reason and compassion, that without the work of faculty, the district would not be the same. First and foremost, faculty are often the first to meet and greet students. They offer guidance and support, as well as instruction and assistance. They also play a significant role in attracting and retaining students, fueling their ambition and encouraging their success. Therefore, faculty have a significant impact on students and also the solvency of the district. Their collective efforts often affecting enrollment, state subsidies, grants, basic aid, and other apportionments. Consequently, faculty are indeed the face of the district. Faculty also take on additional duties and responsibilities, such as student learning outcomes, program and curriculum review, guided pathways, basic skills initiatives, and technology. And adding to their workload, faculty are increasingly adapting to online instruction, counseling, and other essential services, all labor-intensive indeed. And come fall semester, faculty will expend additional effort in expanding their instructional delivery to include hybrid and in-person. Therefore, when considering the cost-benefit of our upcoming contract, please know that faculty wear many hats and are working tirelessly to ensure the continuity and quality of service to students. Also know that inflation and the high cost of living, especially among single-income households, are increasingly high. And finally, as some may recall, the salary schedule was restructured in 2006 to increase starting salaries in the district. This was done by eliminating the first six steps in lieu of an actual pay increase. Faculty with over six years of service were subsequently just a few steps ahead of new hires on the salary schedule. So in conclusion, please recognize the value and dedication of faculty. We are all truly blessed to be in a basic aid district with vast reserves, well over a billion. That's roughly three times the size of the entire United States population. Therefore, increasing compensation would incur very little cost by comparison, much like the proverbial drop in the bucket. Consequently, given the enormity of what faculty do, a salary increase would be a small price to pay, yet quite magnanimous in gesture, goodwill, and gratitude. Thank you, and God bless. Sincerely concerned, faculty."
Julie Martinez, Associate Faculty Counseling. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to express what part-time faculty experience. We receive lower wages for the same work. The cost of living is very high in the OC area. We are not guaranteed hours, as it depends on the budget. How do you make this fair? Full-time faculty take overloads, which leaves part-time faculty little opportunity to teach first. We get the last pick of the pickings. Not sure why we can't work more than 19 hours per week. Even if we don't get health benefits, we should be able to work more hours to offset the high cost of living. No substantial benefits for part-timers. Regards, Julie."
Carla Gardner, an Associate Faculty in the Emeritus Institute, says, "To whom can make a difference? Below is a list of concerns that will be discussed in this evening's FA meeting. What I know with certainty is that I have been affected by every one of these factors. Current realities: part-time pay, 58% of what full-time faculty members work for the same work with the same qualifications. Faculty workload, increasing exponentially, SLOs, program review, curriculum review, guided pathways, division, school, and department meetings, new technologies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Cost of living skyrocketing, especially for housing, impacting newer faculty members especially. A little about me and some background. I live in a small, I've lived in a small town in Arizona for the previous 38 years, raising my boys as a single mother and completing an online dual master's degree in exercise science in 2017. I packed my belongings and my fur baby into a U-Haul to pursue a good living for the first time in my life, only to find it impossible to make a living as a part-time professor. Teaching health and wellness is what I live, eat, and breathe. Time stands still for me, and I know I am gifted in this area. However, since I was hired as a new part-time health instructor in August 2019, it has been near impossible to survive. I've spent countless hours and hundreds of dollars trying to enable myself to be the best online teacher I can be. I've spent several, I've spent hours in the Level 1 and 2 online educator certificate programs, and I am currently enrolled in the Avid program to be a better communicator. I have purchased lighting, backdrops, webcams, and external microphone, a large monitor to see my students, and even hired a media marketing manager to help me set up my in-home bedroom Zoom fitness studio at $80 per hour. Teaching is my life. I'm doing everything I can do to make it in this new technology age. However, to tell you the truth, I'm a fitness teacher for a reason. I do not sit still well. And furthermore, I'm 52 years old, and I have never been savvy with technology. Now I am forced to sit here without pay with anxiety and stiffness constantly in my body, never knowing if I'm doing enough for my students or if my computer will crash or lose connection with the almighty internet. Please help if you can. This is a tough spot to be in."
And the last one we have is Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo, Full-Time Faculty Liberal Arts. Chairboard members, as a chair of the International Languages Department, I would like to support the part-time instructors to be paid the same as full-time instructors, and not only 58% for the same work with the same qualifications. Most of our instructors in the department are part-time. We have 11 languages, and eight of the languages are taught by associate faculty. 70-plus% of our classes are taught by associate faculties, having the IL only four time, full, only four full-time instructors. You can't just imagine the heavy load we have as compared with decades ago. The work has increased more than triple with other obligations in teaching. SLOs for all the languages, program review, 40-plus curriculum review, new technology, et cetera, et cetera. We had to learn from one week to the next how to teach synchronized internet, confer Zoom, internal tools, turn it in, et cetera. At the same time, bringing speakers for different events, film festivals, celebrating every special month, such as Black History, Hispanic, women, LGBTQI+, et cetera. I urge you to increase the salary for part-time instructors as well as benefits. Thank you very much for your consideration."
That's the conclusion of public comments.
Okay, thank you for your public comments. They were very heartrending. And I just want you, everyone, to know I was a part-time faculty member for many years, not at our district, because that would be illegal, which is right. You shouldn't be allowed to teach in the district that you're a board member in. So I never had an opportunity to teach in our district, but I love our district also. So thank you so much for those reports. Okay, now we're moving on to the reports section of the district. It's a section of the agenda, sorry. And we'll start with board reports, and I'll start this one with trustee Ridell, and then go to Carolyn Inman, Barbara J., trustee Pendergast, trustee Wright, trustee Jamal, and then me. So trustee Ridell, you're next. I'm rotating at every board meeting to make it fair.
Okay, thank you very much, President Melchecker. For the sake of time, I'm not going to go into my report, but I am going to write a resolution in the next couple of months, and that has to deal with mental illness. And I see that, at least in Atlanta, that was profound in the devastation that occurred. So I will leave it at that, and thank you, everyone, for participating, and I appreciated all those who shared this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Ridell. And next will be trustee Inman.
Thank you. I'm not going to talk long in the terms of the fact that it's 7:30 already, but I've been continuing to learn what's going on and through reading and many seminars and so forth. And it's very interesting. I joined the Women's Caucus and all sorts of other things because it's really important to learn as fast as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, trustee J.
My report today is about an event at IVC where I serve as a board representative to the IVC Foundation. On Saturday, March 13th, I participated in both parts of the IVC Celebrating Excellence event. The fun started with a drive-through at the college. As soon as you turned on to campus, you knew you were in the right place. There were balloons, fun signs, and of course, the IVC Foundation employees there to greet us. The first 100 cars to arrive received a party in a box that was generously donated by the IVC Foundation Board President, Lisa Greenberg, and her husband. Participants also had the opportunity to talk to Lisa and President Dr. John Hernandez. Before leaving the drive-through, we picked up our delicious dinners from Turnip Rose. At 7 o'clock, the second part, a livestream was hosted by Executive Director Alyssa Oransky and professional auctioneer Suzanne Martin. They were joined onstage by their virtual cardboard. Yes. We also saw many familiar faces during videos that played through the evening. I learned that a large part of the success of the event was thanks to the incredible work of the IVC marketing and IT departments. Overall, the evening was fun, built community, and raised more than $103,000 to support the students and programs at IVC. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee J. And next, trustee Pendergast.
I really don't have any report. I haven't been able to attend anything other than teaching my classes and coaching. I do appreciate the district's statement on condemning violence against Asian and Pacific Island students and community members. And I feel that we all should do our part to lessen that, but other than that, I have not anything else to report.
Thank you, trustee Pendergast, and trustee Wright.
Yes, I wanted to say just a couple of words. In March, the South Orange County Community College District celebrated Women's History Month to recognize the many contributions women have made in America and across the globe. Both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College have celebrated in their own ways by by recognizing female faculty, staff, and students. The district dedicated The district dedicated the website, web site, homepage to a different woman every day in the history who is known for making a difference. We are proud to celebrate women. And given that we have four amazing women on the Board of Trustees, President Marcia Melchiker, Clerk Terry Whit Ridell, Trustee Barbara J., and Trustee Carolyn Inman. I also attended the IVC Irvine Valley College Foundation. On Saturday, March the thirteenth, the Irvine Valley College Foundation held its annual celebration, excellent award event, and fundraising. And it's already been reported to you. They made over a hundred thousand dollars in raising funds. And finally, I wanted to talk, I wanted to indicate that commencement twenty twenty-one is coming up in May. Mark your calendar for Thursday, May the twenty-seventh, to celebrate the accomplishments of our graduates, both at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. This will be a good time to the commencement planning will teach us and working on plans to create festive and fun experiences to honor the classes, the class of twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wright, for that nice compliment. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Trustee Jamal.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Jim, for mentioning Women's History Month. I was going to note that we'd be a better place if more women were in leadership positions everywhere, not just in education. So, that's appropriate recognition. The IVC Foundation Gala was awesome. I was glad to participate. Great job, Alyssa, and especially Lisa Kennedy Greenberg, who's just taken that foundation to another level and is an incredible leader. We had a good meeting with Senate, newly-elected Senator Padilla, State Director. I think we'll have a, we'll have a productive relationship with him and his team. We met with Senator Bates at the state level, Assemblywoman Lori Davies. I missed the other meeting. I'm sure Marcia's gonna comment on that. I think we'll, they'll be helpful on a number of fronts with ATEP, the legislature on some pension obligations which are growing. So, with that, I'll let you conclude, Marcia. Thank you.
Thank you. And my report's just one and a half minutes. So, I'd like to say the welcome back after spring break, and whether you just had a whole week off or just one day, I hope it was restful for everybody. And to save time, I'm just going to list the events I attended, not editorialize on them. The City of Tustin Forum, our staff did an excellent job representing ATEP at this forum. All these events were virtual. The Saddleback College Art Gallery Virtual Exhibit. The Irvine Valley College Dance Masterclass. The California Community College Women's Caucus, our special board meeting that we all attended. And then, as Trustee Jamal mentioned, we had legislative visits with Senator Padilla's staff. He was appointed to take over Kamala Harris' position when she became Vice President, and so it was good to get in with him right away. We met with Assemblymember Cadi Petri-Nora, Senator Pat Bates, Assemblymember Lori Davies, and these were all excellent and very productive meetings, and I think we got a lot accomplished. I attended the South Orange County Economic Report. And also, as Trustee Whit said, and I'm sorry, Trustee Jay and Trustee Jamal said, the IVC Virtual Celebration, which was delightful and raised over a hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know if it was mentioned, you can drive through and order dinner and pick up your dinner there, and that was really fun. Also, the AACJC webinar, where they talked about changes in accreditation and discussed virtual visits to colleges for accreditation visits. And there's new information on the AACJC website. Some upcoming events for Saddleback Arts. They're having Live at Home Saddleback on the YouTube channel, so you could see classical keys and other things. And there'll be two livestreams, theater productions in April. Title of the show will be April the second to April the eleventh. And Rosenkrantz and Gilderstein Are Dead will be April twenty-third to May the second. And just find these on the IVC, on the Saddleback College Arts page. And that's my report. So, now we're going on to Student Trustee Ethan Maniffe's report. Do you have a report, Student Trustee Ethan?
Yes, it's pretty short. So, first, I wanted to start by saying happy New Year to all my fellow Persians and Iranians. We are beginning a new century, and I hope that this century and the next two years be better years for my fellow Iranians. The two events that I really enjoyed, first one was the livestream of the Celebration of Excellence for IVC. It was very engaging and entertaining, and I'm very glad that we were able to raise as much money as we did. The other one was the California Central Sea Caucus. We talked about just the goals of the caucus, and also we heard from SSFC candidates, since they're having the elections soon. So, we were able to hear from the candidates, discuss them, and also endorse some of the SSFC candidates, including Brianna, who's our ASG, President of ASG for IVC. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Brianna. And now the Associated Student Government report, Adam Brownell from Saddleback and Brianna Ross from IVC. You're both here now. Great. Thank you, Ethan.
I just have a quick report. So, we released the results for our ASG elections, and we have a wonderful group of student leaders for the next ASG. Unfortunately, we didn't have candidates running for the Vice President and President positions, so we're promoting a special election, and the students running will be campaigning until April fifth. And we're also in the process of finalizing our budget. But lastly, I wanted to comment on just how moving it is to hear the voices of adjunct faculty coming together. One of my favorite professors works part-time, and when he told me his long commute and living conditions, I honestly thought he was an outlier, so it breaks my heart to see so many others having similar experiences. So, that being said, I'm fairly naive and don't know much about where the money would be coming from, but I do hope a fair compromise is reached. So, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Thank you. And Brianna Ross, for you, ASIVC President.
Yes, thank you. So, we just finished up our elections also, and I'm proud to announce that our current Justice D'Angelo Hunter will be serving as the ASIVC President next year. He's done a lot of terrific things for the organization already. He always is pretty much in every corner of every meeting, and so I know that he'll represent the students well. Yesterday, we actually finished up our Student Senate for California Community Colleges General Assembly, and upwards of about ten ASIVC members, including myself, and our Irvine Valley College Delegate Alexis Wen, did a wonderful job in representing our students at the conference. And at this conference, we also elected our new officers. How our Student Trustee Ethan Maniffe mentioned that they endorsed myself for the position. I actually won that position. It's the Vice President of Regional Affairs, so I'm pretty excited about that. So, I thank the Student Trustee Caucus for endorsing me and having their support. I also just wanted to take a moment to condemn violence and hate towards our Asian-American community and how it's permeated throughout the nation and in our very own city. It's really disappointing and devastating to see. And even where I'm in Northern California right now, there's a lot of incidents as well. And ASIVC will continue to support our AAPI community in any way possible, and we hope that our district will as well. And I just wanted to, lastly, wish everyone a happy Women's History Month and remind everyone to stay safe and get their vaccine when they can. I'm getting mine tomorrow, so I'm pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Yay, good report. Thanks, Brianna. Congratulations. And now, IVC Academic Senate President June McLaughlin. Do you have a report?
Thank you. Very briefly, I just wanted to thank the Board for all their resolutions and for demonstrating what this district stands for, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's great. And now the Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens.
I don't see Blake as a participant.
Okay. And now the Faculty Association, Louis Long.
I'd like to thank my colleagues who showed up tonight and took the time to explain to the Board not only the depth of their commitment and the amount of work they put into helping our students achieve success, but also the hardship that goes along with working for barely more than half of what a full-time faculty member makes for the same work. And I'd like to encourage the Board to take into account what our part-time colleagues have explained about what goes into the work they do and help the Faculty Association, help our part-time colleagues achieve a equitable and sustainable salary. And I, once again, I'd like to thank all those people who took the time to show up because they expressed much better than I could what really goes into helping our students succeed and the kinds of personal sacrifices that they have to go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. They were great stories. I mean, sad stories. The Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Amy Hunter. Do you have a report?
Yes, good evening. So, just a couple of quick things. Saturday, March thirteenth, several of our IVC classified came together in a great spirit to attend the Foundation Celebration of Excellence Drive-Thru. Some of us even decorated our cars to bring the fundraising spirit alive. So, and several of our classified participated in the silent auction and funded scholar later that night to support our students and programs. So, thank you so much to them. On Monday, March twenty-second, our Classified Senate, along with President Hernandez and Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Martha McDonald, held a wonderful contactless caring campus drive-through for our classified professionals. The event was during our lunchtime, drew a variety of classified from both off-site home office locations and those who remain on the campus supporting our remote operations. The drive-through was a great, was greatly appreciated by our classified as they saw from their cars, their fellow colleagues, and our caring campus team saw our new President and Vice President of Student Services for the very first time, both hired remotely at the start of the pandemic. They picked up materials for our Virtual Professional Development Summit that we held later that week, received recognition of our caring campus team's great work with a presentation of a plaque from IVC Caring Campus, and several received their employee service pins from the district for that year. So, it was a great day to kick off for our, for the spring break week, but for our Classified Summit and to see everyone from a distance and to see our colleagues one year after the pandemic hit.
Probably was good to see everyone a year later. Thank you, Amy. And now the Saddleback College Classified Senate, Darren England.
He is not here.
Okay, and then the California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green.
So, Scott let me know that he has no report for tonight.
Okay, and then the Police Officers Association, it's Bo Arbuthnot.
And Bo is not here either.
Okay, so those are the oral reports. And now we move on to the discussion items, and there's no discussion item today. And we move to the consent calendar. So, are there any? Oh, is there a motion in a second for, to approve the consent calendar, and then we'll ask for items to be pulled off of it? I still moved. Okay, Carrie.
I second it.
We'll pull it first, and then we'll vote on that. Okay? So, are there any, Trustee Jay, do you have any items to be?
Yes, five point twelve.
Okay, five point twelve. Okay.
I assume five point two is being pulled, Marcia.
Oh, yes, and five point two, right. Because that will be read by Trustee Whit Ridell. Okay, is that, is that all? So, now we can vote on the remaining items on the consent calendar with the exception of five point two and five point twelve. And, and it was, the motion was made by Trustee Whit Ridell and seconded by Trustee Jay. So, I'll, we have to have the Clerk of the Board call the roll to vote on this. So, can the Clerk of the Board call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student Trustee Maniffe.
Aye.
Okay, so the consent calendar is approved, but now we pulled off item five point two, which has our seven resolutions, which I highlighted in my indication. So, Trustee Whit Ridell is going to read just a part of each resolution because there are so many, but they're well worth reading if you get a hold of the agenda.
All right, I'm going to start out with the first resolution. Okay, the Resolution in Support of Equal Pay in South Orange County Community College District in California Community Colleges. California has many of the strongest equal pay laws in the nation. However, change doesn't happen without education and implementation. The resolution recognizes the need to close the wage gap. Rising awareness above the pay gap and the challenge each other to commit to pay equity in the workplace through the California Pay Equity Pledge. Resolution two. Resolution and Recognition of April as Community College Awareness Month and requests that all students, faculty, and staff celebrate by promoting the good works of the colleges. South Orange County Community College District can join the national effort to recognize the great works, offerings, and programs in the community colleges across America during April, recognized nationally by the Community College Awareness Month. This resolution joins several other local resolutions passed by local city council municipalities who also recognize April as the Community College Recognition Awareness Month. Three. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Month in the South Orange County Community College District. Celebrate Diversity Month has been celebrated in the month of April since 2004. In adapting to the culture and current environment, this resolution will recognize April as Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Month in the South Orange County Community College District. Four. Resolution to designate to designate April eighth, 2021, as the Holocaust Remembrance Day in South County Community College District. The South Orange County Community College District urges faculty, staff, and students to observe April eighth as the Day of Remembrance for the victims of the Holocaust in an appropriate manner. Five. Resolution and Recognition of April twenty-second, 2021, as Earth Day throughout the Orange County Community College District and in support of encouraging all students, staff, and faculty to celebrate the earth and promote the well-being of the inhabitants of our district and the protection of the environment. Across the world, Earth Day is recognized on April twenty-second of each year. To reinforce the district's commitment to protecting our environment, the resolution displays a strong statement of support and continuing efforts in the areas of renewable energy and sustainability. Six. Resolution in Recognition of April twenty-fourth, 2021, as the Day of Remembrance for the Armenian Genocide. The resolution supports the reaffirmation that April twenty-fourth of each year is designated as the Day of Remembrance for the Armenian genocide of nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three. And the Board of Trustees of South Orange County, South Orange County Community College District encourages the colleges and all employees and students to commemorate this historic tragedy. Seven. The Resolution and Recognition of April twenty-eighth, 2021, as Denim Day, part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The resolution recognizes Denim Day, which draws attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain to be serious issues in our society. Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are also intended as a means of calling attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault and the reality that many in today's society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape.
Thank you, Trustee Whit Ridell. And now, is there, will someone make a motion to, to, to support these resolutions? The Trustee Wright makes a motion, and the Trustee Jay, did you second it?
Yes, seconded.
And Trustee Jay seconded it? And trustee Jay seconded it. So can the, where are the roles to approve these resolutions? Thank you.
Trustee Edman.
Yes.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. If you, if you agree, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. And, and those are very meaningful resolutions to many different people in the community. So and now trustee Jay pulled off the item 5.12, which is contracts?
Yes, contracts. I want to talk to Anne Marie Gable about number four, and let me read it. Collegiate Sports Management Group LLC, Professional Services Agreement to Provide Facility Naming Rights Valuation Service for the Football Stadium Complex and Tennis Center, $80,000. I just thought that was outrageous.
You think it's too high or too low?
Too high.
Really? I was thinking it's too low.
Well, wait, can, can I ask, can I just?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say that. Go ahead, trustee Jay. It was rude of me.
What is this for? Can I, sorry, Bobby, if I can augment your?
Yeah, I, I just.
Well, I didn't catch this. I'm, I'm sorry, but.
It's for the sports, it's for naming of the, of the tennis and the, and the football.
Football stadium.
Well, what, what is, what, what is it for? So what services are being provided?
I'd, I'd be happy to explain. So the partner that's named there collegiate sports is a naming partner. It is a firm that specifically does this work, which means it finds naming partners for us in large contracts and has done so for many universities. Part of the initial price for their services includes an assessment of the valuation of the stadium as a whole for naming, but also pieces of the stadium. This fee, while it might seem high, is the going rate for these sorts of services. And the fee is more than covered by two agreements we will likely be bringing you within the next couple of months for the first two partial namings of individual pieces of the stadium.
So let me, so you're, is this, someone would have to pay $80,000 to have the stadium named after them? Is, is that, is that, no, I misunderstood.
Oh, no, no, no.
Misunderstood.
We're paying them.
This, this is a company.
To find people to name the stadium, $80,000.
Oh, I see. Well, you have a point.
Yeah, most of the $80,000 is for the valuation. It's, it's a specific consultancy that does an assessment of what the stadium as a name can bring in the open market before they bring partners to it.
Wow, it's a little high. That is the going rate?
Yes, ma'am. And, and we consider it an investment to be made in the future. And as I mentioned, we more than have that fee covered from a couple of the initial smaller agreements that are already pretty close to coming to fruition.
I'm against it. Okay. I just, I just kind of, I just couldn't believe it when I read it.
Trustee Prendergast, do you have your hand up?
Well, I think trustee Jamal and trustee Whit had theirs.
Yeah, you do too. Okay, trustee Jamal first and then trustee Whit and then trustee Prendergast.
I jumped in on Bobby, sorry. So I think you you, you answered it partly, Elliot. So the scope of their agreement is to identify and secure partners? And are you saying they've already secured stadium sponsors of greater than 80,000?
They have not. We have done so independently before. We, obviously, we haven't commenced any contract with them until we have your approval. So they have not done those. We've done those independently, but that would more than cover, well, more than cover this fee. Trustee Jamal.
I misunderstood. So are, is the scope of their agreement to do outreach to identify sponsors?
That is correct. And to market, they create a marketing brochure.
Eighty thousand.
And, and, and the foundation, is this coming out of foundation funds?
That's correct.
And the foundation is confident they, that this entity will identify, I mean, there needs to be some scope that there, I mean, there needs to be a multiplier of, of the investment of the 80,000. We should get a significant return back on that. You know, at least fivefold, maybe tenfold on, on that investment in terms of the sponsors they identify.
We.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we certainly expect to. Of course, the contract does not offer such a guarantee. You can imagine a broker would never offer a guarantee to bring the partners, but they've done so for many universities in the past. We've looked at the literature they produce, the marketing literature, the campaigns they run, and the very detailed valuation assessments that they use to start that process. So that the $80,000 is based on the actual work hours that they do in creating the prospectus, in doing the valuation and in starting the marketing campaign.
Okay. Well, if there is a good vetting process, you know, I know that kind of worked fairly well on my own because I do some of that in, in my own other lane. So if you've identified the right firm and you are confident they're going to return the value back to the foundation with their outreach and, and securing sponsors, then I think it could be a good investment. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then trustee Whit Rydell is next.
Actually, the previous conversation just now was what I was going to talk about in regards to the foundation being involved in the naming of the stadium. I just would like to ask President Stern, what are there colleges that they have raised money for or is it community colleges? And maybe name one or two. Can we do that or no?
I will ask Vice Chancellor Gable if perchance Liz is on the line because she's gotten to know them a lot better than I have. So I could not name individual universities. I do know from talking to Liz about this organization that almost all their work has been with universities, trustee Rydell. It's not with community colleges. I think we might be the first, but that's because very few community colleges have stadiums like ours.
Correct. Thank you.
Our stadium is certainly incredible. Okay, trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, actually, a couple of questions just popped in as you guys were talking. So I guess the first thing, I just want to clarify, you have people already without hiring this firm. So if you didn't hire them, you have prospects already, but the idea of hiring them is you think you can get better ones?
No, so we have prospects for individual rooms. We're hoping to find naming partners, not only for rooms beyond those first two, trustee Prendergast, but for the stadium as a whole.
Got it. Okay, that, that is very helpful. And we have an idea of what naming a stadium might bring in.
That's, that's the $64,000 question, and hopefully it's more than $64,000. Know that we really need the valuation. It would be really ignorant and arrogant of us to go out and say, we think our stadium should garner this because there's no precedent for that at a community college. So we really need this assessment, this valuation in order to move forward.
And then knowing that it potentially could be a high return. Because I, kind of like trustee Jamal, I'm not involved in this as a business, but I know how this has worked in other places and other institutions. Knowing how much the district put into this stadium, even though the foundation is putting up this money, would the return come back to the foundation and would that go to scholarships or would it be kind of recouping some of the money they invested in the stadium itself?
So to be discussed, but obviously, any agreements for naming partners would come to you all for approval before they would be consummated. But most of the templates that we're working off of that other universities have done for naming partnerships usually divide the funding into three potential pots, and they work with the donors to come to agreement on percentage of those pots. Those pots are scholarships and benefits to the athletic programs, the foundation itself and the college itself.
That was a good question, trustee Prendergast. Okay, trustee Wright, did you have a question?
I have, I have a question. One of the things that, that I are thinking about is, is the mascot going to have anything to do with this? Once you've, once you have.
Good question.
So not, not directly, trustee Wright, but the mascot selection process will be wrapped up at the end of the semester with a final vote across the college.
Right.
And then we will have a mascot in place. The end zone turf of the stadium will be replaced because that still has the old mascot on it and a couple of banners will be replaced. So the naming partner will never, never see anything with Gaucho on it. They will see the new mascot and of course, we hope that their name will sit alongside that mascot at some point in the future. By the way, both of the potential partners that we have been in discussion with have been fully apprised of the mascot discussion and have been briefed along the way to make sure that there was never going to be an issue there.
Good.
And, and, and now we have Elizabeth McCann is, is, is on board here. Does, does she want to, do you want to say something?
Liz, specifically Liz, if you just came on, we were, the one question I couldn't answer is specific other clients that they have worked with.
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. So thank you all, and I certainly appreciate the question. We are doing work here that is groundbreaking and really hasn't been taken on by any other community colleges. But Collegiate Sports Management Group is very well-known. They're very, very well-respected in the college community and the sports community. We did vet them. We have a board member for the foundation who serves on the stadium naming committee who also knows the individuals who started this company, but they're engaged with over 200 NCAA schools. They are working with two community college conferences and they do actually work with 560 community colleges that they represent, maybe not specifically on an amazing stadium like we have, but they do value, do perform valuations and market and sell their naming and sponsorship opportunities in the marketplace. And I think just as, you know, President Stern addressed, this is more than just evaluation. They complete the, the valuation of our assets and then they prepare the marketing materials and they market them to national corporations that we don't have access with, and we still retain the first rights to all of our individual donors and to the corporations that we work with locally.
Okay.
Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Jamal.
I know. We're, we're going to end early tonight, I promise you. I am sorry to go a second round. But I think, I think Liz just answered the question. So I assume the foundation board had a, had a hand in this and helped were aware of this hire and were briefed on it and maybe even helped you vet candidates. I assume the foundation board was involved because they're going to be great. They're going to be assets for you too because they're, they're dialed into the community. So they knew about this?
Yes, absolutely, trustee Jamal. We did inform the board along the way. And like I said, we have Mark Schwartz who serves on our board. He is our, our co-chair right now. And he also serves on the stadium committee and this is his, this is his area of expertise. And he knows the two principal players in Collegiate Sports Management Group and has known them for a number of years.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I think it's important for us to get all our questions answered because this is the, our business. I'm trying to run the meeting very efficiently, but yes, make sure everyone has all their questions answered. So I just want to let people know that. Okay, so did, did everyone have all their questions answered now? And, and just, just so everyone knows, I, I signed up to be in one of the forums to talk about the new name for the mascot for Settleback College and any student or faculty member or staff member could be on the forum. You don't decide at the forum, but you just discuss it. So that, that's coming up this next month. Okay, thank, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
So can the clerk please call the rolls for this agenda item?
We didn't get an agenda.
You need a motion and a second?
Yeah, we need a motion. Someone that's going to vote for it and make a motion to.
I so moved.
Okay, trustee Wright voted, made it and, and trustee. Okay, with trustee Wright's motion and Carolyn, trustee Edman's second, please call the roll.
Trustee Edman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Epstein.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye, knowing there's going to be a good rate of return on this.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye, with the same caveat that trustee Jamal said.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Oh, you're muted, trustee Rydell. Whit Rydell.
Again, Epstein.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye. Aye.
Five to two. So and, and the next item is the general action item, 6.1, the Board of Trustee Goals. And you can see the Board of Trustee Goals in there. We've already discussed them. We actually set them. Are there any questions or comments or do you want to just vote to pass them? Oh, trustee Jamal, your hand is raised.
Yes, obviously, I'm supporter of the goals because these are our goals, but I have a couple of questions. Where does the student housing feasibility study stand?
Chancellor, do you have that or?
Yes, we had, we met with them last year and we, and the executive council decided that they were not, we met with them right after we went into lockdown. And it became clear to us that they were not prepared to do a, an all virtual or remote effective focus groups and surveys of students. So we agreed with them to put that off until August of this year, when we had the hope that we would have more students actually on campus. So we're scheduled to have that begin to move forward in August of 2021.
So I urge you to commence as quickly as possible, which is a priority, at least to have the feasibility. And then are we sticking with the same group or are we reopening it for bid?
No, it's the same group. They just extended the contract, the timeline for no additional fee.
Yeah, I, I mean, I must speak, I can't speak for the whole board, but I would not put it off again. We need, we need to get the study going. And then the second thing is, I know that we included some requirements to establish some baseline numbers and a number of goals. When are we going to do that?
The colleges and the district are working on that now because all of that is part of the district-wide strategic plan and the college educational master plans. So that's why we didn't do it in January because they're still establishing those baselines.
And, and we will have that, when do you think?
I believe we'll have that by the fall.
Yeah, because I think at least five, half the goals have a baseline in there.
Right.
I think it's good that we actually have goals. You know, we're not just, you know, making goals that are non-reachable. These are actually goals that we're establishing for ourselves in, in the district. So I think that's, that's.
They're reachable if we know what the baseline is, then we.
That would be helpful. You're absolutely right. Yeah. And, and there might be some funding for student housing for community colleges. We're waiting, waiting and seeing. So you're right, we need to move forward with the feasibility study. So are there any other questions? Okay, is, is there a motion for approval of our?
So moved, second.
Okay, so trustee Jay made the motion and trustee Wright seconded it. So can the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee, trustee, trustee Edman.
Easy to be muted.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And so it passes. And the next item, 6.2, is the, our recommendate your, your vote for the CCC T Board of Directors election. So these trustee, we're, we can nominate up to seven candidates by the, to the Board of Directors. So does these trustee want to read out their candidates that, or are there, are there any?
Carolyn Edman.
Carolyn Edman, right. I agree with you.
Excellent.
So.
And I want, I wanted to recommend 13 Nan Gomez, Xburg.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I also, Margaret Balkan, she's number three.
Yeah, I agree there.
Anybody else? I got a couple more.
I have two.
Yeah, yes, trustee Wright?
Yeah, two, Tina Miller.
Yeah, I had her also, possibly.
Yeah.
And then number six, who is, who is the incumbent?
Yeah, Gregory.
Pensa.
Yes.
I had number eight, Mary Stone Strobridge.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Well, I, I would recommend Michelle Jenkins if we need one more unless there's somebody else that you like more.
So what I did, Marcia, and everyone, and I haven't researched all of them, I see, I actually did, I did review their statements, that's wrong. Their statements. And I, not all past practices of the board are great, but I think one of our past practices, we tried to nominate Southern California trustees. So I just, I, I highlighted all of the Southern California trustees, Glendale, Rancho Santiago. I mean, I don't know, we consider San Luis Obispo or not, Southern California, Imperial, Imperial, Compton, Kern, Santa Clarita, someone from South Orange County, and I think that was, that was kind of my list, but I, you know.
We would always select people from Orange County, so that's why I would select Rancho Santiago and South Orange County. So that would be Tina Arias Miller and Carolyn Inman, those two, so.
Well, things in, things in California tend to be dominated by Northern California, although we did get a senator appointed who's from LA in Padilla, so that was a good departure from the Northern California focus. But I mean, I know, Terry, you mentioned Marguerite, I don't know her, I mean, if you know her and you think she's good.
No, I didn't mention her, or yes, I did. It doesn't matter. I, I, I watched her, one of her things and I read about her and I liked what she had to say. But I also had marked down Mark Edney from Imperial County, wait a second, yeah, or no, Barbara, yes, from.
Barbara Calhoun's from Compton.
Calhoun, yes, Barbara Calhoun, yes.
I definitely want Barbara, I would, I mean, I would, I think Barbara should be on there.
Yeah, I had marked her, but I just didn't want to tell, you know, say everything.
I know, I know Nan Gomez from Heitzberg from, from that committee, I was on the statewide trust, put on some of the, those statewide webinars and she was very hardworking and seemed like a very committed person also.
Okay, we want to summarize.
Yes, you've mentioned eight now and you can only do seven.
I know. Did we mention Glendale?
Well, if you mentioned Glendale, then there's nine.
I mentioned Glendale, Kathleen, in my list.
But then that would be 10, I think.
Yeah, we can only do seven.
Can only do seven.
Okay, one, two. Hold on.
I know Michelle Jenkins, she served just about as long as I've served, so I've known her over the years, so.
Five. Well, people that are south, I only, I only counted five, Tim. So.
What do you consider south? I mean, that's the.
More south than north, even though.
That would be six, yes, okay.
And Kern, that's south.
Yeah, I had, yeah, I already did do, yes, so that's seven. Okay.
So which ones are they? Because we are counting nine, so we need you to go through the list and tell us which seven.
Can you repeat the nine?
I have Yvette Davis, Tina Arias Miller, Marguerite Balkan, Gregory Pensa, Mary Strobridge, Barbara Calhoun, Nan Gomez Heitzberg, Michelle Jenkins, Carolyn Inman.
Skip Mark Edney from Imperial.
So that's 10.
10.
Okay, we got to keep. I want to mention, when I, when I went through the statements, I really liked Michelle Jenkins, between the ones that you mentioned, Michelle Jenkins, Nan Gomez, Barbara Calhoun, and Maria Strobridge.
Thank you.
And Carolyn Inman, of course.
If we went with the Southern California definition, I think we get to seven.
So which seven are those?
Glendale, Yvette.
What about Santa Clarita? Is that as, is that as south as?
It is.
As south.
Tina from Rancho.
Yeah.
Mary from San Luis Obispo.
I see.
Mark from Imperial, Barbara from Compton, Nan from Kern, and then Michelle and Carolyn. Isn't that seven?
That's eight.
Eight.
Well, cut one of them.
San Luis Obispo.
San Luis Obispo is really central California. I would take San Luis Obispo.
Okay, one, two. One, two. One, two, three, four, five, six. Is that seven?
One, two.
Who are the last two then?
Read them off again.
Yeah.
Yvette Davis, Tina Arias Miller, Mary, oh, Greg, Gregory Pensa, or did you take him off?
Mark Edney.
I think they took him off, I don't know.
Took him off.
Mark Edney, Barbara Calhoun, Nan Gomez Heitzberg, Michelle Jenkins, Carolyn Inman.
That's, that's, that's more, right?
That's seven.
I missed, I missed Bernard, I missed Ventura County, that is.
Bernardo Paradise?
Yeah, just caught that.
Well, and then, you know, Allen Hancock is not far from Ventura.
Copper Mountain, Southern California.
Maybe we, does anyone know Bernardo?
No. I had originally written no because when I, when I read all of them and then I.
I don't, I've said enough, whatever you guys want to do, I think we got six for sure and then we just need one more.
If you're between two people and one of them is Bernardo, Bernardo had one of my favorite statements.
He did? Oh, okay.
Let's swap out Mark for Bernardo.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I got seven.
Okay, read them.
I have eight.
We got Glendale, Rancho Santiago.
Ventura.
And Ventura, sorry, I didn't, hold on. No, I didn't have that, sorry, I'm wrong, you're right.
Compton, Kern, Santa Clarita, South Orange County.
Was that seven that you have?
Glendale, Rancho, Ventura, Compton, Kern, Santa Clarita, South Orange County.
So we're not doing Imperial, okay. Okay. Okay.
That's seven. I've got a few thumbs up from the board members. Okay, well, good luck Carolyn.
You have to do a motion on it and a second on this slate.
Okay, so is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
So trustee J made the motion and trustee Wright seconded it, so can the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item is 6.3 and this is the delegation of authority to act in the dissolution of the joint powers authority, Southern California Consortium for the Community College Learning, and this is inter telecom learning. So is there a motion? We already discussed this, so I think.
So moved, I moved, so moved.
Trustee J moves, is there another second? And then trustee Inman seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? We discussed it pretty thoroughly, so I'm not sure, no, and I discussed it in quite a bit this afternoon with the chancellor as well. So can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast. Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item 6.4, Settleback and Irvine Valley College's student health care increase of $1 and I understand the students and the constituents groups have agreed to this, so.
So moved.
Moved by trustee J and is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Wright. Are there any comments or questions? No, so can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
And then 6.5, Irvine Valley College HVAC, VAC, of course, and roofing for five buildings in the central plant project. It's a ward of the bid to NKS Mechanical Contracting, is there a?
So moved.
So moved, is trustee Jamal and second by trustee J, are there any comments or questions? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
Thank you. And the next one, 6.6, award of architectural services agreements to campus-wide lighting upgrades and library improvements for IVC. IBI group is doing it, is there a motion and a second?
I so moved.
I second it.
Trustee Wright makes the motion, trustee J seconds it. So are there any comments? Okay, so please call the roll.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And trustee six, I'm sorry, number 6.7 is the purchase agreement for seven modular buildings at Irvine Valley College from the Mobile Modular Management Corporation. And we discussed this and IVC thinks this is the most economical way to go. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J makes the motion, is there a second?
Aye.
Trustee Inman, did you make the second or was that trustee?
It doesn't, I second it.
Okay, trustee Inman seconds it. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, and we actually discussed this with the chancellor. Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Okay, and the next one is, oh, I, you said I?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, 6.8, our board policy revisions about the transfer center and student health service, and this is just for review and study. So I guess we have to approve it, is there an approve?
So moved.
I second.
And trustee Wit Rydell seconds it, so can you call the roll, even though it's for review and study, I think we have to do this?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is academic employee and classified administrative personnel.
6.9, board policy revision, approved board policy.
6.9 is the board policy revision, these are to approve all these board policies.
So moved.
I second.
We read them last time, discussed them, and now we're approving them.
Yeah.
Can you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Right, okay.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
And, and the next item is the academic employee and classified administrative personnel actions, are there any changes, vice chancellor Visca Cho?
There are no changes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just have to mention that there's two very long time employees, I'm trying to bring it up again, that are retiring. And one of them is professor of anthropology Wendy Gabriella, who's retiring after 31 years and nine months and is on the agenda. And then Patricia Levin, art instructor at Settleback College, who has been retiring after 33 years and nine months. And then John Richards, who's environmental studies, who's been with the district 14 years and 11 months. And we thank these people for all their years of hard work and teaching our students at our district. We really appreciate their service to our district. Okay, we can call the roll now, thank you.
No, I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry trustee Wit Rydell.
Yes, I would just like to know COVID training, so it must have been a one hour training?
It was 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
20 minutes, and what was this?
So, State of California through OSHA is mandating the training for employers related to prevention and spread of COVID-19. And so all employees of the district are required to take the training. And because these are part-time faculty, they are paid for the training because they're hourly employees. So that's why you see the cost that we have paid our part-time faculty for taking the mandatory training.
All right.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. So can you call the roll, please? You need a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
Trustee J made the motion and trustee Wright seconded it, so can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Meltricker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monaffey.
Aye.
And the next item is item 6.11 and it's the tenure track hiring authorization revision for Settleback College and they added one extra faculty member to their people that they would like to hire for the 21, 22 academic year. So is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee J made the motion and trustee Wright seconds it. So can you please, are there any questions? Trustee Jay made the motion and trustee Wright seconds it. So can you please, are there any questions? Are, are there any, there's no, I'm sure there's no changes for this, okay?
No changes.
Okay, so can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is classified personnel actions. Now I'll just mention that there's another longtime personnel person, Linda Gravenstein, has been the senior lab technician in the language department of Saddleback College, and she's been working here for forty-two years and three months. And thank her for her long work for our district. So are there any changes to this agenda item, trustee Viscoschil?
No changes, President Musker.
Okay, do we get a motion and a second?
So moved.
So trustee Jay made the motion.
I have a question.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, trustee Inman seconds it, and trustee Wit Rydell, what is your question?
My question is on page one of exhibit A, C1, program technician categorical. This is a new position, right? Because I put down what was this called before. But in reading it again, this is a new position?
That is correct. It is a new position for Saddleback College.
Okay, and this is someone who's going to coordinate? It doesn't say.
So it's a part-time position, twenty-four hours a week for twelve months. And that is the extent of my knowledge on this position. I don't know if Dr. Stern has any additional information. It comes from the student equity and special programs area.
Forgive me for serving as an intermediary, Vice Chancellor Gable, could you please find Dr. Avalos? He heads up this area, and he may know more about that position. I'm sorry, I do not.
This is Juan Avalos. Can you please ask your question again? I want to make sure I answer the right question.
Well, I was looking at this, and it doesn't describe anything except for how many hours and when it starts. So apparently this has already started, and someone's already been hired for this. But I wanted to know, is this person, it's a technician, but is this person coordinating classes or? I, I don't know what it's, what this person is doing. I thought at first it was replacing a position we had before, but in reading it again, that's not true. This is a new categorical position. And I wanted to know the person.
Yeah, trustee, point, point me to the item. Is this the one in?
This is foster, this is foster kinship care, Juan.
Okay, foster, foster kinship care?
No, it's, oh, sorry, Juan, it's not. It's the student equity and achievement program. So it's a new position that you're creating that's called a program assistant for your student equity and achievement program.
Gotcha, so.
He said it was under A.
I was C1. It's C.
C, authorism.
C1.
So let me get to the right. This, this position, this position under the student equity program.
Can you see it on the screen, Juan?
Yeah. I'm looking at it now. Sorry about that. Let me zoom in.
Part-time, twenty-four hours a week.
Yeah, we re, we recently went through a process where, where there was a request for, no, this, this person doesn't coordinate. This, this position is a staff position aimed at working with our students in the clase program. Clase is the channel Latino. It's, it's a, it's a program for Latinos in transfer. So this is looking for part-time help to assist that program in, in addressing equity gap issues for Latinx students who looking at reducing the gaps for transfer is what this is. It's not a coordinator position. It's a staff position that serves in a number of different capacities. One of which is mentorship for the students, but also putting together events for that group.
Okay, did this come from the, what was it, the outrageous grant that we received for Latinx?
No, this is not the HSI, the HSI grant. This is separate from that, but it's definitely aligned with those same interests.
Have you?
Class is a program that was created a number of years ago in the transfer center through equity.
Okay, has this person been hired already?
I don't, I don't believe the position, I don't believe a person's in that position just yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can we call the roll now? Are there any other questions?
Do you have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Aye.
Okay, and, and item 6.13 is non-bargaining unit personnel action, just regular items. And we're just ratifying new personnel appointments and volunteers.
So.
So trustee Wright made the motion, and trustee, who said, who seconded it?
I second Jay.
Trustee Jay seconded, okay. Is there any question? Can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Thank you. And then the next is California School Employees Association, or CSEA, Memoranding Understanding for the 410 Alternative Work Schedule for the Summer of 2021. And Vice Chancellor Viscoschil, do you have to say anything about this, or?
No, unless there's questions on the board.
No, I don't think, so we're just going to this, the, the same, the same schedule we had last summer?
Yeah, this is a negotiated agreement between CSEA and the district.
Okay, great. Okay, trustee Jamal made the motion.
Second.
And trustee Wright seconded it. Now can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Aye.
Okay, and, and then in 615, we recessed to a public hearing because it's the, the CSEA or California Schools Association's initial proposal. And I believe I just started the public hearing now. Isn't that correct?
Yes, do you have the script, President Melchiker?
Yes, I do. So we are now at board agenda item 6.15 regarding a public hearing on the South Orange County Community College District School, California School Employees Association, or CSEA, chapters 586, initial proposal to the district. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscoschil will provide an introduction. Vice Chancellor Viscoschil, Viscoschil, I, I can do.
Thank you, President Musker. The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the California School Employees Association's initial proposal to the district. If the board has any questions throughout the public hearing process, I am here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? No? So then, board item 6.15, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. And we can have public comments, but public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Okay, no public comments?
There are no comments.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? We will now move to item 6.16, which is the adoption of the SOCCCD, California School Employees Association Initial Proposal to the District.
So moved.
Second.
So I think trustee Prandergast made the motion, and trustee Wright seconded it. So do we call the roll on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Aye.
So that was our public hearing, and now we adopt the California School Employees Association Chapter 586 Initial Proposal to the District. That's number 6.16. So is there a motion and a second?
We just said that.
We did that.
It's 6.17.
Okay, 6.17 is.
Public hearing.
We, the public hearing, we are now at board agenda item 6.17 regarding a public hearing on the SOCCCD District's Initial Proposal to the Police Officers Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscoschil will provide an introduction. Vice Chancellor Viscoschil.
Thank you. The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district's initial proposal to the Police Officers Association. If the board has any questions throughout the public hearing process, I am here to assist. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board item 6.17, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes.
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Are there, is there any further discussion by the trustees? Okay, so now item 6.17 is conclude, conclusion concluded, and we are moving to item 6.18. And this is the adoption of our district's initial proposal to the Police Officers Association.
So moved.
Trustee Pendergast made the motion, and trustee Wright seconded it. So can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
Aye.
So now now we're on reports. Is that, is that correct?
6.19, which is the Police Officers Association Initial Proposal to the District for Review and Study.
Yeah, we discussed this. So now that was our adoption of the district's initial proposal to the Police Officers Association, or POA. And this is our approval, our acceptance for review and study of the Police Officers Association Proposal to the District. So do we have, this is 6.19. Do we have a, a motion and a second?
I so moved.
Okay, trustee Wit Rydell made the motion. Was it trustee? Pendry, I seconded it. So can you please call the roll on, on accepting the Police Officers Association Initial Proposal?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monafee.
And essentially, the, the, the rest of the meeting is just reports, and they're, I guess, 7.1. Do you want to read that, the staff response to the public comments in the previous board meeting?
No, it's included in writing in the report. I think that's sufficient.
It was, it was a trustee, President Elliot Stern's response to his questions about the mascot. Okay, the next.
Can I just say thank you? This is exactly what that is, section is for, that when we get public comments on something.
Mm-hmm.
Have staff bounce back to it. It makes it very obvious that we are listening.
And we're responsive to the public, and we're answering the public's comments or questions, and some people have comments about the mascot. Absolutely.
So just a quick question, ten, ten seconds, Elliot. What are the next steps again on the selection? I mean, I caught the register. I caught the register article, but I want to just hear it from you.
I, I. We have to promote him again.
Sorry?
We have to promote him to be a panelist, for him to speak.
I already, I already asked this question earlier today, so I'm glad you're asking it, so everyone could hear it.
There we go. Sorry, we have four forums that are coming up next week. Those are published, and we can send you notice of them once again. You certainly can attend any of those, though one is reserved for folks within the athletics area. Following those four forums, at which point people will be discussing the pluses and minuses of each of the 21 semifinalists. The college will have a college-wide vote, all employees and all students in May. And that will be a final recommendation to me, and then we will employ a graphic artist to come up with some visualizations of our new mascot, which will be announced and launched officially at the stadium in fall.
So, so all, all, all students and all staff can be involved as they would like to be. Did that answer your question, trustee Jamal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um. And then there's the facilities plan status report, the CARES and CRISA Act funding monthly summary, the response to the COVID-19 block grant monthly summary, the monthly financial status report, and the retiree OPEC reports. And there's written reports from the two college presidents and the chancellor, which are very interesting. They have a lot of information about what's going on at the colleges and in the district. So there, I would recommend people reading them. So. Now, now I'm, I, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of a former trustee, Harriet Walther. So tonight's meeting will be adjourned in honor of the life of former South Orange County Community College trustee Harriet S. Walther. To her many accomplishments in public and community education, ranged from being a nursery school teacher and director for Head Start, to her appointment and reelection to the Saddleback Community College District Board of Trustees,